We're going to open our Monday, August 19th, 2024, regular Board of Education meeting. It is 7:02. Trustee Beaver, can you do a pledge of allegiance, please?
I, of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It was requested before we go on that we just have a moment of silence. We have a previous student that passed away from the year 2023. Details to come, but it was requested that we just take a moment of silence in respect to that student. Hey, we are going to continue on with roll call, please.
Crystal Beaver?
Here.
Mary Bush?
Here.
Rebecca Chambliss?
Here.
Mary Harp?
Here.
Cindy Holder?
Here.
Mark Kimball?
Here.
Gloria Thompson?
Here.
So, public fundamentals. Public input is fundamental to the operation of Madison District Public Schools. Our public has an opportunity to speak at every Board of Education meeting. A period of time known as public comment is set aside at each meeting to give parents and other citizens a chance to speak directly to the Board about school-related topics. Anyone who wishes to speak to the Board must fill out a request form and give it to the Board Secretary before the meeting begins. Comments are limited to three minutes. The Board of Education accepts comments made during the public comment from anyone who has followed these guidelines. Public comment is one of the many information sources the Board uses before making decisions in the best interest of the children who attend Madison District Public Schools. The Board also works with the district staff to address citizens' questions and concerns. Trustee Beaver, did we receive any requests?
I have not.
Did anyone else receive a request? Okay.
President Holder?
Trustee Beaver.
Before we get started, I'd like to make a motion to amend this agenda tonight.
Okay, go ahead.
I would like to take off Board Action Item B to remove it from the agenda tonight. I would also like to add the approval of the American Tower contract to purchase the lease of the T-Mobile cell phone tower.
So, we are going to remove B and add E. Do you have support?
I'll support.
Any discussion? Okay. We need none. We need a vote to remove 5B and add 5E.
Roll call vote, please. Crystal Beaver?
Yes.
Mary Bush?
Yes.
Rebecca Chambliss?
Yes.
Mary Harp?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Mark Kimball?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Onto administration report.
Good evening. I'll pass my report down.
First, I want to take an opportunity to congratulate Trustee Beaver and Bush on their certificate of achievement for becoming a certified board member through the Michigan Association of School Boards. So, congratulations, and I would like to present this award to you guys.
Thank you.
Next up, I have a presentation from Ebony Thompson, and we have a potential candidate for our Director of Business and Finance. And tonight Ebony is going to present to you guys her 30, 60, 90-day plan if her contract is approved.
Does that include resume?
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't have it. I did not have the resume. But here's a copy of the presentation. Do you have the resume printed right now?
Thank you.
If you could give me a minute?
No problem. Good evening, board members, administrators, staff, and community. My name is Ebony Thompson, and I have eight years of financial experience in banking and school finance. Whereas the last four years, I have been within school finance. In addition, I also served in classroom instruction and after-school programming funded through a 21st Century grant. In total, I have about 16 years working in schools. I have a bachelor's degree in business management, a master's degree in business administration, and also a master's degree in accounting. I also have a purchasing officer certification, CPO, through MSBO, and on track to receive my CFO certification in May 2025. Okay. And next, we will go with our 30, 60, 90-day plan. The agenda will go over the 30-day plan, building foundations; 60-day plan, strengthening operations; 90-day plan, long-term strategy and development, and then any questions. So first, goal setting and relationship building. First thing I would do is meet with superintendent to establish clear goals for Madison District Public Schools. Engage with staff to form relationships, gather feedback, and collect ideas. Next is financial review and analysis. Research the previous year's budget to assess the financial status of the district. Compare fiscal year '24 year-end 630 expenses and revenues with current fiscal year '25 spending and review budget amendment notes. Review any grant awards for fiscal year '25 and stay updated on funding changes from the MDE, including changes in 31AA mental health funding and funding for bilingual and ESL students. Complete all year-end financial expenditure reports that are due. Ensure the completion of outstanding reports, including the SC 4094, SC 4096, and the SETSEC payroll audit. Policy and procedure review. Review existing policies and procedures to ensure proper internal controls are in the business office. Identify areas for improvement in financial management and compliance. Audit preparation. Review outstanding and pending audit tasks with the previous finance director to ensure a clean audit, and prepare to complete all year-end reports and establish report deadlines. 60-day plan, strengthening operations. First one is post-audit and reporting. Complete post-audit cleanup and resolve any outstanding audit issues. Ensure the completion of all outstanding reports, including the SC 4096, SC 4094, and the financial information database, the FIT. Budget management and forecasting. Review market trends and closely analyze, closely monitor budget and spending and forecasting. Analyze cash flow statements to ensure financial stability. Ensure the district's transparency website is up to date with audit and MDE required documents. Staff engagement and goal monitoring. Meet with staff regularly to discuss goals and hold weekly or bi-weekly meetings to monitor progress. And then we have our 90-day plan, long-term strategy and development. One, budget and compliance. Prepare the January budget amendment, ensuring alignment with district goals and financial realities. Ensure compliance with appropriate risk mitigation strategies. Relationship and professional development. Continue to build and strengthen relationships with staff and board members. Attend professional development sessions to enhance finance and district management skill sets. And lastly, educational development goals. Establish and refine goals, focus on providing students with the best opportunities for educational development. And then next, I'm going to tie it into the mission, Madison's mission and vision. The mission reads, Madison District Public Schools will use a rigorous curriculum that will engage any student regardless of their current academic level in an environment that is safe, supportive, and nurturing for all students. And the vision reads, Madison District Public Schools will provide its students with the education that will prepare them academically, socially, and emotionally for the next phase of their life. And then the scope, the 1% kind of stood out for me because it states we will become at least 1% better than yesterday by striving daily. And this is a task that I resonate with because every day you can always get better, and then you can promote your staff and the students and the community to be better as well. Any questions?
Yes.
Bush? Explain sinking funds and why a district needs them.
Well, the sinking fund is essential for the district because it can help bring money in so they can renovate buildings, maintenance, things of that nature.
And how is it separate from just the money that we get in the general fund?
The sinking fund is separate because it's money from the federal, so it has to be made sure it's allocated properly.
Okay. Can a district operate without sinking funds or bonds?
It would be hard, but my current district, we were approved bond and sinking fund dollars, so it really helped renovate the buildings and then provide additional supplies that the district needed.
Okay. Anne, I have another. Tell me what strategies you would recommend or have used in the past to build a general fund?
Well, first you want to look at the budget. Look at the previous year's budget and then your current budget. You want to see where you can cut costs at. You want to make sure the staff are aware of the policy procedures, especially with spending funds, especially spending federal funds. There is rules to that. Cut spending when necessary, and that will help with the budget.
So, it's all about cutting spending. What can be done to increase, you know, income?
Increase income? Well, if there are any grants available, grants could help increase the budget as well, where you don't have to use a general fund. You can use grant funds for some.
Have you had much experience with generating grants or finding grants for the district?
Well, in my previous district, we worked, actually grants was a part of our department, so.
Okay.
And then I worked in the grants department as well with the after-school program, and that was 100% grant funded.
Any dollar figures you can throw at me, specifics?
For that program, we were awarded, well, for the first, we were awarded like 1.2 million to service seven schools for after-school programming.
Okay.
And then that has been for about since, really since 2009. So, every five years when the grant would expire, we would renew, and we were awarded those, the grant dollars to continue the after-school programming.
Very good. Thank you.
Trustee Chambliss?
How would you promote a sinking fund or a bond to a community that is extremely hesitant to vote yes for those, and a district that may need those things? After, well, I'll tell you a quick history. We had multiple bonds fail. We had a bond pass in 2020 that, was it 2020, 2021? That was for $11 million, but it did roofs and HVAC and some of the things that were most critically needed. Going forward, there are things that the district needs to upgrade and update just to bring us to be a competitive school district and give our kids, you know, that next level care. So, if you have a community that's extremely hesitant to vote yes on those things, how would you promote those?
Well, my current district, when we were in the process of voting for the bond, my department especially would go out in the community, doing community events, and tell parents about how this bond dollars could benefit the district, what could we use it for. They had a plan to renovate all the buildings, adding playgrounds, new equipment for like band. We bought band equipment. We created a stadium. Now we have our own stadium. So, just giving them the vision of blueprint so that they can see where the dollars are going. So, that's kind of beneficial. We want them to see what they're going to get instead of, you know, we can talk, but we want you to have the vision set in front of you.
I have one more.
And if you have a district that is in, not necessarily a financial crisis, but is stringent on the budget, what is your first go-to to cut? What is your opinion on student activities, clubs, programs, things that affect the kids day-to-day and staff? Like, what would you cut first, and what would you cut absolutely last?
What would I cut first? Don't want to necessarily cut the funding for the student activities, but you want to encourage them to fundraise for it so they can have dollars in those accounts. See if there's any grants available that we can assess. If possibility, I don't want to say hold salaries, but if you want to see where you can cut a little bit in each area so that then you can get back into the black.
Have you ever been working in a district in your position that is in that type of situation?
Yes. Yeah, we were in deficit for longer than five years, and we just came out of deficit two years ago.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Trustee?
Sorry.
Nope, go ahead.
So, going back to what you would do in the community, understand that a lot of this, unfortunately, a lot of the kids that live within our district choose to go to the other district within our city. So, how do you engage people who maybe don't have children and are just taxpayers to engage them to want to vote for a sinking fund or, you know, things? Because we are looking at a lot of homeowners, like again, that may not have children in the district, and we need to convince them that what they're doing for the school is a benefit. And I mean, I can generally say, well, it helps, you know, if you have a good school district, it helps, you know, your, like, if your resale value of your home, you can think like that. But, you know, that's not always something that everybody considers. So, are there things that you can do to engage community that might not have children in this district?
Well, reach out to them, encourage them to, if they can't attend the board meetings, they can watch it online. Promote kind of like a community event, or go out to the neighboring districts, pass out flyers with a little QR code on the flyer. They can just read up on information about what a potential bond or sinking fund could do for the community. And then the same thing, we probably have a vision or something that they can foresee that they can look forward to, and we're like, oh, this might be a good idea. This might be something good that we can really get involved in, and it'd be good for the community and be good for Madison District, so.
Thank you.
I really want to thank you for answering that because it seems like that question might be outside the purview of your actual job description, should you get the job. But we have a small administration, and it's basically three to four people, five people who are making a consensus and team decision, of which Ms. Perry then is the executor of that. Are you used to working in a culture in which you might be asked to wear more than just the hat that you've signed up to in order to support other people's jobs because of thinking and, you know, activities or things like that?
That's something that I've been doing for years. So, I'm kind of used to it, and I don't mind helping because I get to learn new things and people learn from me, so everything kind of comes full circle. So, I'm used to wearing multiple hats, and I don't mind putting skin in the game, what my previous director would say.
What kind of results can you specifically identify that you produced as part of a team in which you were, this is what we did as a team, and this is what we produced?
Well, so in my department, we have to update our procedures and policies. I've noticed like any problems or like little problem solving, and then if there's people that don't know much, and I would help, like, well, we need to correct something so that they can learn how to do this, or they can see how this is done. And then I would go to buildings and help new staff. I would train them either online, in person, or virtual, especially during COVID, like, train new staff, getting them acclimated with the policies and procedures and how things are ran. So, just being useful and helpful.
Okay, one last question. Can you do Excel spreadsheets in your sleep?
Yes. I love Excel. It's fun to me. I'm a little nerd.
Thank you. Now, Holder?
Trustee Chambliss?
If given the position, how long do you plan to stay? Because we unfortunately have a steady history of being a stepping stone district that, you know, staff uses to get some experience, or, you know, I did this, this, and this. But is your goal to come here to get experience and move forward somewhere else? Or is this like, you want to invest in Madison, you want to grow with Madison, you want to bring Madison back to what it once was and be part of that?
My goal is to grow with Madison because I've been in the current district for 16 years. Started off in the classroom, then went to become a site coordinator for after-school program for like 10 years. And that was also during the pandemic, during the, when we were in deficit. So, we were in deficit for 2012 up until 2022. And during that time, it was higher in freezes, even though my salary was based on the grant. So, we were on a set salary, but I still wanted to still be there. I like my coworkers. I like the district. I love the children. Still to this day, I get kids, and parents come up to me like, "Hi, Ms. Thompson. What are you doing now? We miss you." So, I just, I'm kind of a loyalist. But for me, I think it's time for me to grow, and I want to be somewhere where I can grow and not be stagnant in the same position, but I can evolve.
And I have just one last thing. Madison is a very small community. It's tight-knit. Anything and everything you do will be public. Sometimes that comes with accolades, but sometimes and more often than not comes with criticism. How well will you handle the fact that pretty much everything you say in a board meeting and everything you put out that's public will be looked at, triple-checked, and questioned with a more cynical eye? And that might come back to you where you hear about it, and it's not always so easy to deal with that. How will you deal with that?
Well, I feel like I'm good working under pressure. I can pretty much keep a level head. I'm not the type of person that will react off of something. I would, you know, make sure that I hold myself accountable and then present myself, especially if I'm representing a district.
Okay, thank you so much. We're kind of a unique district, so I know the questions are a little bit different than probably what you expected. So, thank you so much.
Yep, no problem. Thank you.
I had a couple of questions. I was waiting for everybody else. Have you been involved directly or indirectly with trying to get a sinking fund passed?
I wasn't involved with it during that time, but when the dollars were there, then I would make sure that dollars were being spent right. Make sure that we followed the procedures and policies of the state. Make sure that we had things that we needed for our audit because I was responsible for getting that information to our auditors, so.
Only because like in the first 60 days, that's kind of what a lot of our focus is going to be on, so.
Yes, and I have resources that I can get the information, so.
That was one of my other questions. Mentors. If you don't know something, what's your form of action to get the answer?
I have mentors in other districts. We also can reach out to people on the MSBO listserv for any advice and any questions. I have probably about five different people that I can just call right now with questions and get answers.
Are you comfortable calling the district attorney if you have a problem or a question?
Yes, in my current district, I have. Uh, yes, in my current district, I have reached out to our district attorney and had a conversation with them regarding some things.
Last two, Yo and Yo, how familiar are you with them?
Uh, with my current district, we've been using Yo and Yo for our audits. So for the past four years, we've been using, well, I've been involved in each audit for the past four years and we, and they're all been with Yo and Yo.
Uh, and how, how in-depth have you been in the processes of the audits?
Uh, I'm very involved in it, especially in my position. I have to make sure I get, uh, correct expenditures that the auditors will need, uh, make sure that we follow the policies and then any backup documents that are requested by the auditors, especially with the fixed assets, construction and process, um, our purchasing card inquiries, journal entries, um, and grant-related items as well.
Oh, Trustee Thompson.
Um, I'm curious if you have an audit due time-sensitive, how far in advance do you start? We are in a situation where in the past, we have had all kinds of problems with getting stuff done on time.
Um, well, with, with Yo and Yo, they have a, I don't know if you guys use SurLink? Okay, so they will post things on SurLink. Um, if anything that I need to have, that I need to get by 6:30, I make sure that I start that at 6:30, um, or end of the year, and then I'll have it ready to give to the auditors. Um, if they posted on SurLink, then I make sure that I go and look at if there's anything related to my position. I go and see what they requested and just get started on that, and then I start putting things in the file. So I'm, I'm right there starting with it. I like to start early. I don't like being late. I don't like missing deadlines, so I'm very, very time-sensitive.
Anybody else? Trustee Chambliss.
I was joking, I have one more. If you were in the position and somebody came to a department head, even Ms. Perry or Pam, and they wanted to access funds for an item or a program and it just wasn't there, how comfortable are you to saying, to putting your foot down and saying, absolutely not? And even the board, if we, you know, come up with an idea, because this board, again, being a small community and a small district, the board tries to help with things like enrollment stuff as much as we can while staying in our lane. How comfortable are you to look at us or Pam, Perry, or department head and say, no? Or if you have someone who's overspending, you know, taking away their access?
Um, no. My answer would be no, because if we have policies and procedures in place, I'm not going to break those policies and procedures because, one, if the auditors come and they pull something and then we don't have the proper backup for it, it'll fall back on the district and it'll fall back on me as being head of finance. And I don't wanna put the district or myself in that type of position. But if we can try and find funds from somewhere else, if it's applicable, then yes. But if not, then we have to make sure that we're following the policies and procedures because we don't wanna be in trouble.
And so Madison has had kind of a wild couple of years. Um, our audits have been a little bit more intense and difficult than probably they should have been. Our budgets have been a little more crazy than it should have been. Um, are you aware of what you're stepping into and the fact that this district has had quite a bit of turmoil? And so your job, going to a different district might be a lot easier than coming here. This is gonna be, it could potentially be a little more difficult. I don't say that to scare you away because you seem absolutely lovely. I say that because, again, we've been a revolving door. So if you come in, we want you to dig your heels in. We want you to know that, you know, it might not be as easy as where you're coming from. Like, are you okay, like you know what you're getting into?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yep.
Am I lying?
No, I just have never heard it like that.
I have a question, it's kind of more for the board. Um, I know Ms. Perry emailed over the contract earlier. Did everybody have a chance to go over that?
Yes.
I did not. I just know, I think you're, we're wanting us to amend the agenda tonight, correct, from the email, and I forgot about that earlier. I apologize. I just wanna make sure everybody got a chance to read the contract if we do make that motion tonight.
Who needs the copies?
I do, sorry, I was at volleyball. No, I have a friend that-
I didn't need one because you gave it to me here.
Just saying, like, this contract's very similar.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I know, I saw it in the email.
Typically, we don't like to vote on contracts that we've only had for a day, so definitely want a chance to look. But first, we have to decide whether or not we wanted to, um, consider hiring Ms. Thompson. Um, so do you guys, while we're moving on, did you guys wanna look at the contract and we can address this, uh, in our Board of Education Action Items?
Do you want me to make a motion to amend and edit?
Sure.
President Holder?
Trustee Chambliss.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda.
What would you like to add?
Uh, the consideration of Ms. Ebony Thompson's contract for Director of Business and Finance.
You have a second?
I'll second that.
Trustee Bush.
Any discussion? We have a roll call vote, please.
Crystal Beaver?
Yes.
Mary Bush?
Yes.
Rebecca Chambliss?
Yes.
Mary Harp?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Mark Kimball?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Go ahead and have a seat and we'll be getting back to you in just a little bit.
Is that gonna be 5F?
Yes. Sorry, 5F. Uh, next up, Superintendent Perry.
Okay, so I have some more things that I want to report on, but I am going to turn it over to Pam for a quick facilities update.
So we had a tree that was on the property of, um, a resident of Madison Heights that fell and was, um, coming over the fence at Madison Elementary School into the playground. We contacted the city, um, just to see that what could be done. And the city cannot force a resident to remove a tree, um, but we can remove any part of, um, a tree or anything like that that is on our property. So I did have a company come out, um, and they took care of it today. So that tree has been removed all the way to the fence line, so it is no longer hindering the playground at Madison Elementary School. Um, the other thing I just want to update you on is we did have another company that came out and did some work around the administration building, and they pulled out, like, all of the weeds, they trimmed back all the bushes, they planted, or they installed new mulch. And then this week, they'll be finishing up at the back where the entrance, where we entered through the ad building and fixing, adding grass there and then creating like a stepping stone so that we don't have to walk through grass and dirt anymore to enter that door. So I just wanted to give you, um, a little bit of an update on that.
No questions? Uh, Trustee Chambliss?
Was the person who fell injured?
Nobody fell.
Oh, a tree fell. Oh, a tree fell. I'm sorry, I thought you said a per-
A tree fell.
I heard a person. I thought you said a person fell.
That's why we had them sawed back to the fence line.
And I was like, oh, they're climbing a tree and they fell. That's so sad.
No, no. We, a tr- a very large tree fell.
I swear I heard person. I'm so sorry. This whole time, I'm like, I wonder if it was a kid, if it was an adult.
Nobody fell.
You could wonder like, well, I know one ass how the person is doing.
I know, I was like, so did we call them? Are they okay?
Okay.
Um, I did send over the contract for American Tower. I just didn't know if you guys had any questions about that, any concerns. I do wanna give you guys an update. Last week, the city manager from Madison Heights reached out to me to have a meeting. I guess in their last meeting, they passed the bond to start, um, changing the outlook of downtown, which is considered 11 Mile. Last year, I came to you guys with this report and they, it had an island in the middle. So this is from John R., east of John R. on 11 Mile until you get to the high school, which is Lorenz Street. So this construction is not planning to take place until next, at the end of the school year. Uh, Melissa asked for our calendar so she can make sure that we are not having any type of disruptions inside of the school traffic. So this is the new outlook as to how 11 Mile is going to look. And I just wanted to share with you guys because the last time we had a meeting with them, it looked a little different. There was an island in the middle, but instead, they're just gonna turn 11 Mile into three lanes where you have one going east and west and then a turning lane in the middle. They are also gonna make sure that there are sh- for sure sidewalks because right now, a lot of cars has access to the sidewalk as parking, so there's going to be a definite separation between the sidewalk and parking. Um, I really appreciate the city for including us because they were really concerned about how would it impact our traffic. One of the concerns I had was just kids walking back and forth to school down 11 Mile. As long as one side of the sidewalk is open at all times, I think we will be perfectly fine.
Didn't they say though that this would, like, add quite a bit of time at drop-off and pickup for parents? Isn't that one of the concerns?
No, so actually, we were there and we met with someone who, who's like the traffic study team, and it was like a hundred-page document they gave us, but I was like, you can keep it because the only congestion that they find, found out what happened would be at DeQuender and 11 Mile. Was that right? It was just one spot. So nope, that was not a concern in terms of like the surveys that they do with traffic pattern and so on and so forth.
I think it's because, uh, Mr. Bliss said that it would go from a four-minute pickup time to an eight-minute pickup time, so that was the concern.
I, I think time will tell. Anything west of the traffic light where Lorenz is, is gonna be a three-lane with a designated left-hand turn lane. So it's kind of sad we didn't get the left-hand turn lane up into the front of the school, but it, that project is not going that far. So you are gonna be going from four lanes up to Lorenz, down to three lanes west of Lorenz. So I guess time will tell. We're gonna have to see. The only thing that it definitely is gonna do is a lot of the businesses that are parking over the sidewalks now, like the Dairy Queen and, and those places where their parking is not necessarily designated, they're gonna have street parking designated.
Is there anything they could do for us? Because I think to go, like, it looks so beautiful, it looks so lovely, and to have all this and then just have it stop at the street that our district starts, it's almost like a drop-off zone? And it's like, oh, there's Madison, drop-off zone again. So like, is there anything we could do in that to beautify it?
Well, I did ask them, like, so when you guys are doing all this construction, where are you gonna store all of your equipment? And I let them know that we have the parking lot at Madison High School that we're willing to exchange for resurfacing if you guys use it. So we are trying to get something out of it, and Melissa was really great with saying, oh, that's a great idea, I'll take it back. So hopefully, they use our parking lot to store some equipment and we can get a nice, brand-new parking lot at the high school.
About some trees. Well, I think, like I said, this was all DDA money, so that's why it started and stopped where it was. They're only doing that one section of the DDA.
Right before you get to Lorenz, there will be a nice caution merge sign, so it'll be like the little stripes that says you need to get over, we'll get that.
It's a sign. It's a good sign.
Stripes in the lane.
Anybody else? No? All right.
And then one more thing, and I feel like this is the most we've asked you guys to amend the agenda, but I do wanna apologize. Last week during our meeting, um, or during my, uh, report, I sent out a message about purchasing textbooks for Mat- Wilkinson Middle School as well as health textbooks for grades six through 12. So last week, I was able to work with, um, the title, our Consolidated App, and through that app, we're able to purchase textbooks to help us with closing the gaps in math, English, science, and social studies. And with Title IV, I can also purchase textbooks to help with our health education program. So last week, I sent you guys the contract. I actually spoke with MDE today and she approved, well, I sent her an email to approve. She said she's willing to approve those two line items as long as I send it to her without fully approving the application. I did submit our Title I application today, which was not due until August 29th, so that is done, but she, our approver, said she will, she is willing to approve the two. So I am asking you guys to amend the agenda to purchase these textbooks because I can contact the distributor and hopefully have them here for the kids by the first day of school.
Is to make that a motion now?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
President Holder?
Trustee.
Bush?
Sorry.
I, I propose that we, uh, amend the agenda to add the approval of the purchase of these textbooks.
Ready. So this would be 5G. Trustee Thompson provided the second. Any discussion? Everybody got a chance to read the textbook and hold up a sign? All righty. If there's no more discussion, we need a roll call vote. This is just to add it to 5G.
Crystal Beaver?
Yes.
Mary Bush?
Yes.
Rebecca Chambliss?
Yes.
Mary Harp?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Mark Kimball?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, I have two more things in my report and I will be done. I also want to announce that today, the English Language Learning Department, we conducted our evaluation with the Michigan Department of Education, and out of 39 indicators, we only had one finding, and that was regarding staff. So I wanna say a huge thank you to our ESL team. They were just formed this year. One staff member was not certified and she's actually went through a program to get certified, Alexandria Smiley, so kudos to her. And I just wanna thank everyone for their commitment because we had staff members log into this review while they were at home, and, um, it's really, it has a really, it says a lot about our staff that we really just started implementing a real program and we passed 38 out of the 39 indicators. So kudos to them.
Good job.
And last but not least, Wednesday is opening day. We ask you guys to come out and be a part of our tiger theme and wear your orange and, is it royal blue or navy blue? Orange and blue. So we are asking staff to come out ready. We are, we have a fun-filled day, and if you guys are available, please come out at 8 o'clock, 8 a.m., and we can introduce you guys to the staff members and let them know who's leading our district. And if you can't come at 8, you can come at lunch, which is 11:30, and it's here at the high school. And that's it.
All righty. Moving on to the consent agenda. All matters under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature by the Board of Education and will be acted upon in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If any member of the board or any citizen requests discussion of an item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and become the first item of business under the Board of Education Action Items portion of the agenda. This includes approval of the minutes of the Board of Education for the regular meeting August 5th, 2024. Approval of the August 1st, 2024 through August 16th, 2024. Financial payments as submitted in the amount of $954,505.37. Approval of the personnel report submitted by Human Resources on August 14th, 2024. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the consent agenda as presented. I need a maker in support, please.
President Holder?
Trustee Bush.
I recommend, I make the motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Trustee Thompson supports. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please. Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Crystal Beaver?
Yes.
Mary Bush?
Yes.
Rebecca Chambliss?
Yes.
Mary Harp?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Mark Kimball?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Next up, sinking fund advertisement. I know we had started to talk about in our finance meeting where we met on Wednesday, some of the ideas and strategies that might be used. Superintendent Perry, is there a place that you wanted to start with?
Yes, so if you want, I have the language from our attorney as to what we can use sinking funds for. I can put it on display. And my question is, when I create these advertisements, I want your feedback to say, hey, this is what we want to say or support what we're on the sinking fund, on the advertisement. So I can share this real quick if you guys don't mind.
Trustee Bush.
At what particular point do we actually all agree and say that yes, we need to have a sinking fund and have that become an official vote before we start to do the advertising?
We did that last week or two weeks ago.
So basically what we can do according to our attorney in terms of things we can use for sinking funds, we can use sinking funds to purchase real estate for sites or construction or repair of school buildings. I know in the past when we did have this conversation, we talked about how we can use this fund to replace or to pay for the bus leases as opposed to using general funds dollars. So my question to you guys is what angle do you guys want to take in terms of advertisement for this sinking fund? I can give you some ideas that we have. Some of the things we really need to work on is repairing the concrete. If you go in the entrance of our buildings, especially at Wilkinson Middle School, if you drive through the parking lot at Wilkinson and even at Madison High School, that is one of the things we really want to focus on. Another thing we wanted to talk about was securing doors. Right now we are using certain grant funds to replace certain doors, but around the district, a lot of the doors need to be replaced. We also talked about because we had an increase in the lease of the busing, possibly using some of those funds to pull back from general funds to pay for that.
The concrete and the safety doors were were big ones. So for example, the doors that go along the east side of Wilkinson Middle School. So those doors, when this, we had the safety and security grant that came out and they did the, what did, what did the, the survey? And then when I had, I met with someone from Madison Heights Police, he came out and did a, we did a tour of all of the buildings. Those doors over there, he, they all said were just not, they were so old that they can't be guaranteed that somebody couldn't get into them. So there's specific doors, specific glass that's supposed to be used around the doors. So even the glass that's there around the door areas is not up to code. We don't have to have it up to code because it is grandfathered at this point, but he strongly suggested that those are things that we focus on. The other thing with the cement in the parking lot at Wilkinson, which we call Lake Wilkinson because if it comes down and it rains like it has been, it literally turns into a lake. And so that's, it's a safety issue, especially when school starts back up and parents are trying to get in while the buses are there. So those are just some things that it's not just our opinion. It was through the safety security grant survey and the Madison Heights Police Department when they did the walkthrough with us.
Trustee Kimball?
I think when it comes to the sinking fund, we should keep the message very simple. And as you know, coming up in CNG, there's a story showing all the work that the bond has done successfully. And I think the message should be that that bond was due to neglect during a period of time that the district was under mismanagement. Now we need the sinking fund to keep up on maintenance so that we don't need a big bond later. I think we should just stick with that message. People can resonate with it. It's simple and I would just stick to that.
Smart. I think that's one of the things we are trying to do is create a facility maintenance schedule so we can know what's coming up, when is coming up and.
But the actual details of that, the average person will be lost on that.
Okay.
I think just keep the message simple.
Can you restate that one more time for the record so I can write it down?
The last bond that was passed was to catch up work that was neglected during a time of mismanagement of the district. Now we want to stay on top of the maintenance so that a big bond will not be necessary in the future. Think you'll read my comments in the newspaper article coming up are very similar to that. And it's going to highlight all the work that has been done, including the refs, the central air units, everything to assure taxpayers the money was put to good use. That's my, that's my two cents.
One of the things I know we had discussed was obviously this money, if passed, is going to come in for, was it 10 years?
I think so, I don't know.
I think it was 10 years. So obviously our, our needs are going to be different. I would project our needs to be different 10 years from now than what it is today or tomorrow, which kind of goes hand in hand with what trustee Kimball was saying. I personally would stick to what construction and repairs need to happen on our school buildings or safety issues. I don't really think that we need to push busing. That was something that the previous budget person had put out there. He had kind of had a plan of his own that was never presented to us. So my, my thing is, and he was trying to move ahead so that we could get this on the ballot in November. But I think we all need to decide what our priorities are going to be and exactly what Superintendent Perry is asking for. What is it that we want to, I don't want to say promise, what, what we are putting out there and saying, what, this is what our word is for. So trustee Beaver, go ahead.
I definitely agree with the building updates, especially with the security issues. I mean, that's going to pass anywhere. Nobody wants, you know, what happened in other districts to happen here. Nobody wants it to happen anywhere. And if we can put our tax dollars toward, you know, keeping a kid safe, then that's where we need to go with it. And, you know, Ms. Holder's thing with the buses, that just frees up more money if we're using the sinking fund for those updates, then we have that money that's freed up for
Bush.
If you recall, and I think this would be something that might be useful as a visual, it was probably a year ago, I asked you to put together the list of the projected maintenance and repair for each building in terms of what's immediate, what's forecasted, what's long-term maintenance. And for each building and having that, that's a visual that somebody can say, oh, this is what the money's going to. And that way we can prioritize what's most critical to be done. And over the course of the 10 years, oh, this is what the money's going to be going for then. This is what the money's going to be going for then. So it gives people a visual of how that expenditure is going to be important over time.
We still have that one that I can pull up from Plant Moran when they provide it with the bond word.
A good place to start. Trustee Bush and then trustee Kimball.
I was done. Beaver.
Beaver, that's okay. I was just going to say, I know at one point we had kind of something like that that was in the works that might be in the board office. Do you remember Mr., I don't know if I'm allowed to say previous names or not, had one that was going and he would kind of come and present what had been done and what was still needed? I don't know if it's still in the board office at all.
He would present it, they would present it at the board meeting.
Yeah, so what like needed to be done for each building, what they had worked on that month, but I mean, it's kind of like a, like that 10-year game plan, like this is going to need to be done. That might still be somewhere in the board, I don't know.
If it was part of the board minutes, I should be able to find it.
Okay.
Within the past five years?
Since I've been on the board.
We have an updated one actually from Plant Moran that they did last year. So we can definitely take a look at that and talk to our facilities manager to go through that and see, hey, this is what needs to be done immediately versus later.
Trustee Kimball?
I think we should avoid specifying exact things that we want to do. And the reason why is when you pass a bond, it has to adhere to the specific language. A sinking fund, you have more flexibility and over time your needs are going to change and priorities are going to change. And that's the last thing you want to do is tell people we're going to do this, that, and then we don't end up doing this and that. And without being able to explain to them why something else took priority, we look like we don't know what we're doing or we lied to them. So I would avoid that.
Is everybody okay with waiting for the information? Just the, that you guys have in the board office? And I think maybe we can hone this down a little bit, give you some direction so we can get started.
Are you guys okay with me taking what I have right now to have our graphic designer put something together and present to you guys at the next board meeting to get the ball rolling and you can critique? So I'll just do a generic one and then what I'm hearing you guys say is somehow communicate to the public our needs, maybe it's through our town halls that we have.
Not only that, but having them spread out over time. So you'll have like one every other week plus, you know, all the other media contacts that you'll be doing to promote the thing.
Well, the other thing for the, why should I contribute? The answer to that is we all benefit from an illiterate or.
And our property values, our property values are maintained by having a healthy school district in our district.
Educated people, there's less crime, there's a far host of things that they'll benefit from whether they.
Can I ask one more question? When we had the Hidley, we had town halls and we only had two people show up. What can we do or what do you guys recommend?
You may have more people show up for this because their taxes are going to go up. It's going to be a much harder sell.
Okay.
Well, I was also thinking that maybe we could do a video that we could post on the website and just when we decide what is it going to be our talking points, we can kind of do a frequently asked questions or something like a Q and A that we know ahead of time what those questions might be and we can put together a video that we could post.
Or a virtual Zoom.
We did that too.
No one showed up.
No one showed up.
The only thing you can't do is ask them to vote for it.
Yeah, we only could educate, we can never say yes.
The school district can't, but we can.
I'm going to give the floor to trustee Chambliss, but I wanted to ask one question. As a rule, people that are in the elementary school still live in this district or the grandparents live in the district, I don't know what would be acceptable, but hitting with information, that particular group, I think is, is sensitive because those people are at that building every day. So I don't know what could be done and obviously we want to work inside the confines of the law, but those are the ones that as a rule are going to be residents here. Trustee Chambliss?
I think things, when it comes to elections and voting, have drastically changed just since 2020. And I think that a social media campaign is going to get you a lot farther than hosting in like town halls. I would consider the Zoom meetings, I think with this being a little bit different than a Hidley, more people are going to be invested in it. So I would definitely do some Zooms. I would do some videos. I would have a Q and A option on the website, like frequently asked questions and kind of posting so people can easily look up data if they want to. But I would have our social media, and I mean all of our social media, our sports, our clubs, our programs, our main websites, Instagram, Facebook, TikTok, like whatever we have to do. I think a social media campaign is going to be your best bet because most people right now are getting their news and information from 30 to 60 minute clips that they swipe through. So if we want them to come out, that's, that's a generation that's gone. So I think our best bet is going to be quick, little witty comments like, hey, look at Lake Wilkinson. Don't like it? We can fix it.
A TikTok.
You know, yeah. I just want to add to.
Trustee Beaver, go ahead.
That with the video, just like the mama protective bear in me, just being careful with showing the vulnerabilities of some of our buildings because you don't want someone seeing, oh, you can go to this door and easily, you know, so just.
Give it two shakes.
Me this way and kick, you know.
An elbow and a kick and you can get in.
Before we start with the videos, just be careful.
Yeah, I wouldn't show that one on a TikTok, but the Lake Wilkinson.
Anybody else? We're good. Comfortable with, have enough information to move on. Perfect. Next discussion is a change of meeting days. So it was brought to my attention by actually multiple school board members that they might want to consider changing the meeting day. I would like to get some feedback as to what we think if we would like to entertain that. I know, I don't know if you want to speak to it, trustee Chambliss?
Well, when we were first, when I was going to get my signatures to run for the November election, I had spoken to a board member who said that due to work, she couldn't remain on the board if meetings were held on Mondays, but that could potentially move it to another day. And I said, well, if we move it to another day, would you be able to stay on the board? And she said, yes. And I said, well, that's something that could always be considered because, because right now currently, as far as I know, there's myself, Ms. Holder, one more candidate for four spots. So we're going to have to appoint someone. Personally though. I mean, there could be write-ins, yes, absolutely. Personally though, I'm not sure what day of the week we could, just because there's so many other city boards that run Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. But it's definitely something that we should have a discussion on instead of just you would like to help and can't because of the day of the week, so you're just out. But then it does set a precedence. Do we start switching days for anybody? You know what I mean? It's a topic that I said we should at least discuss it.
If we're going to switch days, can we switch times? Because I don't like driving at night anymore.
Well, I think if it was on the table, we would look at all of it. It would be a board policy, so it would be a board policy change, which would require more than one vote. I just, I am not opposed to especially with kind of the circumstance that we're in as far as write-ins and all of that other stuff. And so I just want to know, I agreed to put this on the board. What do the other board members think? What do our administrators think? If anybody wants to put in some feedback, I would like to hear it. Do we want to continue on with looking at this? Anybody?
Definitely. I think Wednesday would be a much better day than Monday.
So trustee Kimball says yes, Wednesdays.
Wednesdays.
Trustee Thompson says Wednesday.
Are we voting on an actual day change right now?
No, we are looking at, do we have enough interest to look at this further? Right now this is just discussion.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I don't think we should. I think we should stick to the Monday.
Trustee Beaver, do you have input?
I just think it sets a precedence for anytime something doesn't work with someone, then we're going to go and change board policies. It's a slippery slope that can, and I understand the need for it and I understand that I just, I think it could be a slippery slope as well.
Trustee Chambliss?
I think at first I thought it, what harm could it do? But then. But then, I can't find a day of the week that doesn't interfere with the city board that one of us is on. You know, we have Parks and Rec, which is Tuesdays, we have H R E C, which is Thursdays, we have Historical Commission, and there's one more, I'm sorry, on Wednesdays.
Why don't we all look at our calendars? I'm in support of at least pursuing an investigation.
I definitely support discussion.
Okay. And trustee Harp?
I'm definitely in favor of discussing moving days.
Thank you. All right, can everybody just look at their schedules? Yes, I understand, and I don't disagree with what trustee Beaver has said. But I think at least at this point, we should look at our calendars, do whatever investigating you might need, and let's, we will put it on next month's agenda to discuss it a little bit more. Next up, we have action items, approval of policy adoption. These action items seek approval of the adoption policies, P O 6320, P O 6321, P O 6325, P O 6350, P O 6520, P O 8390, and P O 8880. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the adoption of these policies as presented. I need a maker and support, please.
I'll make the motion that we approve these policy adoptions. You need me to list them for the?
Please.
P O 6320, P O 6325, P O 6332, P O 6350, P O 3890, and P O 8880.
Thank you. Trustee Thompson will support discussion. Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Crystal Beaver?
Yes.
Mary Bush?
Yes.
Rebecca Chambliss?
Yes.
Mary Harp?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Mark Kimball?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All righty, moving beyond B, next up, approval of individual contract amendments. This action item seeks approval of the revised individual contracts for the following employees, Patricia Perry, Pam Vermeeglio, Erin Andra, Ricky Malek, Lisa Turner, and Catherine Weiss. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the revised individual contracts as presented. I need a maker and support, please.
President Holder?
Trustee Chambliss?
I make a motion that the Board of Education approve the revised individual contracts as presented.
Lee Thompson, support? No? All right. None. Roll call vote, please.
Crystal Beaver?
Yes.
Mary Bush?
Yes.
Rebecca Chambliss?
Yes.
Mary Harp?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Mark Kimball?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Next up, approval of the business specialist contracts. Out the duties of the finance department, the district has agreed to hire two business specialists whose responsibilities are as follows. Business Specialist One, payroll, taxes, quarterly reports, O R S payments, accounts payable, payroll-related audits, unemployment, adjust staff management, and payments, payroll-related accruals. Business Specialist Two, grants, F B Rs, H R benefits, bank transfers, Medicaid reporting, F M L A management, A S O P management, employee verification, accounts receivable. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the business specialist contracts as presented. I need a maker and support, please. Trustee Thompson?
I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Education approve the business specialist contracts as presented.
I'll second.
Trustee Bush?
Second.
Any discussion? Trustee Kimball?
The contracts that I seen spell out $32 an hour, when we were first briefed by you, it was $30 an hour. Why has that changed?
So when we went back to the two individuals to discuss their contract, they pointed out because of the longevity that they, how long they've been in the district, that they were giving up a lot of things in their current contract in order to take on this one. And so we kind of negotiated back and forth, and we settled in the middle with $32. One of the things that was given up is that they're giving up a week's vacation, that...
How much is that, a week's vacation?
It's their rate now, I will have to look that up.
Because this rate is at $2 an hour, it's $4,000, over $4,000 a year.
I do want to point out that we are eliminating one position that we were originally paying $65,000 for, $60,000 without benefits, and these two ladies are taking on that role.
I, I understand that, but this is where stuff starts to add up. I mean, you brought it to us as $30 an hour, now it's 32, times two, so that's an extra $8,000 a year right there.
Or we can pay an extra $60,000 a year and hire someone to take on the finance controller position.
Well, do those employees give this an either-or situation for that amount of money?
Yeah, this was a part of the negotiating process with them. Pam, could you speak on some of the things that they point out that they were missing in their contracts?
I think one thing, maybe, and, and because I have concerns about this as well, not the people, but the pay rate and parameters, that's the endpoint, not the beginning. So when we set a parameter in closed session, I did not expect for anything to come back, not a penny above. And this has a couple dollars above plus.
Yeah, and I...
So that's where I think you saying, well, we could hire a person, I don't think that's a part of this discussion.
I understand that.
I think that's where our concern, we're yelling fire, we need to, to stomp this out, and yet, we're going beyond what was asked of us in closed session without warning.
Yes, I understand. And I do want to stay for the record that I did not just push this on you guys today. I sent the board packet out on Wednesday, and moving forward, I thought that we all had a professional courtesy, we could have had this conversation. So it's not like I just sent this out today, it was sent out on Wednesday.
I don't think it has anything to do with professional courtesy.
No, I just want to let you guys know that if...
I think what it was is our endpoint looks to be the starting point for you guys. I don't know that it was, but that's my concern, because what we approved isn't what's here.
Yeah, no, it was not the starting point. I understand what you're saying. When we were looking, when we were looking, what are we doing here? When we were looking at their contracts and the amount that they would be giving up, that's when we started to negotiate. It was not, it was not something we had anticipated, because there were things that we did not realize that they would be, that would be dropping off when they did this. A lot of it was vacation days. One of the employees was going to lose eight vacation days. The other thing was the longevity, which we were able to put some of that back in. And it was the added, the extra duties that are also being added to the duties that they currently have. So they're still going to be doing the job that they have in addition to these extra duties. So we weren't, we aren't, and weren't going to take anything away from them. So that was the other part, that when we started talking about it, that's when they brought that to light, that, you know, here we're doing the, the position that we currently have and adding this to it. And that's where we started negotiating the dollar, the hourly amount.
Trustee Thompson?
Other than a week, what else did they give up? A week's vacation, because that's about $1,100. But this $2 an hour comes to more than $4,000 a year.
But that... So longevity, so right now, there's, let me look at their contract here. The one that we created for them. Yeah. So longevity is not part of this. Their pay for longevity was $2,000. So that was removed from this.
You said that one of them was giving up eight days?
Eight vacation days.
So eight vacation days at $32 an hour would be $256 a day, or $2,048 they were giving up with those eight days. And then if they're giving $2,000 in longevity away, that's $4,048 that they gave up. So really...
But it's from their starting pay, because remember, we already did $8 an hour and $6 an hour increase before you go to $32.
I'm only looking at the $2 an hour right now.
I feel like it's six in one hand, half dozen in the other. Like, they may have lost a little bit, or we may have lost a little bit, but it's not enough. I think when you kind of put in the $2,000 longevity, and then you also put in the eight days vacation, I think it kind of comes out in the wash.
Here's, president Holder?
Trustee Bush?
Here's, I think, the fundamental question that we as a board have to ask is, for the duties of these two positions, is it worth $66,000 a year or $62,000 a year? And for the, the complexity of these two positions, is that a fair and competitive rate of pay to, to accomplish that? And is the, are these three-year contracts, one-year contracts? Can they be, do they, we have to give raises next year? I mean, if that's the case, I think we should go back and say, look, it's 30 bucks an hour or nothing. Because there are other people we can hire for that amount of money with these sets of skills and experience. You see what I'm saying? So it comes down to that, too. I mean, these are longtime employees, I don't want to lose them. But conscious-wise, is a business specialist one with these sets of duties worth $66,000 a year instead of $62,000 a year? Given our district.
Right. So these duties, how it's broken down into two, those were all one position that we were paying $65,000.
Yes, and now we've got two people paying $66,000.
No, but we have two people that already were employed, that were already getting paid by us. So we're taking that position, and we're dissolving it into these two people, and we're increasing their salary.
So what's our net gain out of dissolving all three positions and creating these two, financially?
It's about $40,000.
Now, each one of these people costs $60,000.
What she said was, we're saving what, $40,000?
About $40,000.
By eliminating all three positions and just creating these two, we're saving the district $40,000.
Yes.
In that case, I don't care about the two bucks.
And we're taking on more of the clerical responsibility that they were doing in the board office.
Yeah.
And that's another concern, only because you guys have worked so hard now, and I know, and this will probably pass, I just want it to be put out there. We had been notified before by previous auditors, our business department was too small, and we were ticked for it. So I know everybody, these two women I've known forever, I know they'll do a good job. It is not personal. I just wanted to know why there was a difference, and because we have to do it in public, we can't do individual contracts in, in closed session. So it has nothing to do with them or their work ethic. It has everything to do with, we all need to be on the same page, because I really don't want to see this happen again. If there's going to be even a penny over what we started out at, I think we need to be notified as a group. I don't know that we'll say no, but I think we need to know ahead of time.
Just for the record, you were notified as a group, it was just questioned today. We, I notified everyone on Wednesday when I sent the packet, that's notifying.
No, you did not say to all of us on a, like, when you did Friday, that contracts coming out, look, maybe we need to renegotiate, maybe the, the parameters set weren't enough. I would have appreciated that heads up. That's what I'm saying to you. I didn't want to find it in the back of, of this.
Please don't say that, I was not trying to hide it and be shady.
I never said you were trying to...
You just said I didn't want to find it in the back, it was in the packet, president Holder. And, and to be honest, when I asked you today, why wasn't it brought up? You said that you had a lot going on last week. So please have grace with me, and know that I have a lot going on, too, and that I'm not...
Don't raise your voice.
I'm not trying to hide it. So please don't make it seem like, you just said you found it in the back, it was not...
That's right. When I was looking at the contracts, it was at the very back.
Call to order.
Let's, let's call the question.
President Thompson? Or president Thompson? President Holder? Boy, the brain's not working today. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the business specialist contracts as presented.
They had been approved.
We just need a roll call vote, please.
We just need a roll call vote.
Okay.
Crystal Beaver?
Yes.
Mary Bush?
Yes.
Rebecca Chambliss?
Yes.
Mary Harp?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Mark Kimball?
No.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
No, we are moving on to the other items that we needed to deal with. T-Mobile purchase, we need discussion, and then if we want to pursue that, we need to add a motion to the agenda. Right now, it is just discussion.
Ms. Holder, I amended the agenda for the approval of the American Tower contract to the purchase or the lease of the T-Mobile.
Yeah, it's item E.
Yes. Okay. So what we have in front of us is to accept the T-Mobile purchase, and we need a maker and support.
I'll make the motion for the approval of the American Tower contract to purchase the lease of the T-Mobile cell phone tower.
Thank you. Support?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
President Holder?
Trustee Chambliss?
Um, over the weekend, we were at the football field, my family, and we were looking at the tower that's involved. And I would like to see potentially if this does work out, us looking at getting some more towers. He had mentioned that they could come decorative, to look like trees and things like that. It would be nice to add some things like that. We do have the real estate property that we're not using, so maybe to place one somewhere in like a corner there. I know you need like a 15-foot around it. So I think that this is a really smart move. I don't know how it came to Madison, how you guys brought it to us or found it, but I think this is a very, very clever way of doing, you know, business and, and a route I don't think any of us would have thought of, so I'm really impressed by that.
Trustee Kimball?
I think the jury's still out on the safety of these things, and to put these at schools, if you remember, there was a school not too long ago that the superintendent ended up resigning, and the board was recalled because they had a cell tower at the school. The elementary school. So I don't think adding any more cellphone towers is a good idea, especially if you weighed out against losing enrollment.
Trustee Chambliss?
Um, so that was my concern as well, that's why I asked about that at the last meeting. And actually, we, I had done a lot of research about it, and then, I'm not going to name names, but Matt spoke, my husband spoke to somebody who's very well-versed in this business, and there's no safety risk. Apparently, when they, down being on the ground, all of us, there's no safety risk. They've researched it, they've looked into it, we're completely fine. When they're working up at the very top, they wear a special suit, and it lets them know if anything happens, if anything is coming out. But that, like, never happens, and if it does, they just have to jump down and, you know, whatever. But I also did a lot of research myself, online... But I also did a lot of research myself online because we've all heard about, you know, the Aaron Brockovich thing with the water. You know, like, you've always worry about your environment.
City theories.
Yeah, you always worry about your environment. And so I did do a lot of research on this, and I cannot find one single document, because I was against it at first. I don't like cellphone towers in general, but honestly, I cannot find one scientifically-backed data that says there is any correlation between health issues and cellphone towers. I can't, I can't find it.
Yeah, but you have to look at it. Superintendent lost her job. The board got recalled, and people withdrew their...
That's an anecdote without facts, Mark.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's just the reality of it.
Wait, wait. Just asked from the floor, please.
Yeah, I just want details on this thing. I just...
I'm done. I'm bowing out.
Thank you. Trustee Beaver?
I think it's important to just bring up to memory that I know Mr. Kimball had mentioned, you know, adding anything. And they said before anything gets added, that it would have to come to the board for a vote. So this isn't just saying, yes, here's free rein, here's our property. They're still going to have to come to us with anything that they want to add.
There was two options. And is there, for the people that are supporting this, I need to know, is there a preference between the two options? And just so you guys are aware, I did do the math because this started in 2008. And it is, it started at thirteen thousand. It was renegotiated, starting at thirteen thousand with a two-point-five percent raise every year. And the interest was compounded. So just doing the math, we're at about just under two hundred thousand... No, twenty-four thousand a year. And that will be going up every year. So it's about two thousand a month. I guess I would rather continue with that and look for another place for them to put it for the whole three hundred thousand. But whatever the wish of the board is. The two options, I had them out.
I don't seem to have that in my packet here.
It was emailed in my notes Friday.
The first one is cash offer, three hundred and fifteen thousand lump sum with the purchase being an easement. Or option B, cash offer, three hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred dollars with three-year installment with eighty-five thousand dollars at closing and three additional annual payments of eighty-eight thousand, four hundred dollars on the anniversary of closing. Same thing, it's an easement purchase. Thank you.
President Holder, can I add the...
Out of order. This is not public comment time. I love Matt, but please.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I understand. Trustee Bush, I heard you. I did say, and they, they did, as kind of a gift to us, replace the light. I don't know if that's something that the board would want to consider adding into this as at least an item to be negotiated. That would be the maker and the support decision.
Are you speaking?
So, Trustee Beaver? And Trustee Bush? Did you want to look at option A and ask that they replace the football lights? This is a different company. The original T-Mobile did do it the last time, and I know it was a big cost savings to us. Is that something that you want to add or not?
I mean, she can always ask them, but to me, it's not going to be like a final yes or no if they don't. It's something that, you know, you could say, hey, could you, but to like make it a final, if they don't do it, then I'm not going to, you know what I mean? So I don't want to complicate it and add it into the motion, but it's definitely a conversation that you could have with them.
Trustee Bush?
I have no objection either way.
Okay. Anybody else?
President Holder?
Trustee Chambliss?
Just related to the lights, they did say if a couple more light bulbs go out, we may have to potentially move our games to daytime or Saturday afternoons because there would not be enough lighting for the field.
A lot of money, maybe we can replace them with money being given here if nothing else. But it's always worth asking, that's what happened the first time around. All right, anything else? All right, roll call vote.
Crystal Beaver?
Yes.
Mary Bush?
Yes.
Rebecca Chambliss?
Yes.
Mary Harp?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Mark Kimball?
No.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Director of Business and Finance. Now, we have seen her presentation. We have been given the information. Are we comfortable? Does someone want to make a motion? President, this, Trustee Bush?
I make a motion that we accept the contract for Ebony Thompson and as her new position, as Director of Finance for our district.
I'll support.
Everybody's comfortable with the contract in front of them? Any questions? Roll call vote, please.
Crystal Beaver?
Yes.
Mary Bush?
Yes.
Rebecca Chambliss?
Yes.
Mary Harp?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Mark Kimball?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Congratulations, Mrs. Thompson.
Welcome to Madison.
Next up, textbook purchase. We need, thank you. All righty. It would be purchasing of math textbooks, thirty-three thousand dollars, health textbooks, twelve thousand, five hundred, eighteen dollars, fifty-one cents, for a total of forty-five thousand, five hundred, eighteen dollars, fifty-one cents, and this is using title funds. We need a maker and support. Trustee Thompson?
I'd like to make a motion that we buy our math and health textbooks at forty-five thousand, five hundred and eighteen, fifty-one cents, using title funding.
Thank you. Support?
I'll support.
Trustee Chambliss? Discussion?
I just have a comment.
Trustee Beaver?
I'm just glad we're updating some textbooks. It's, I know a concern of a lot of people, so I'm glad that, I always like seeing curriculum and textbooks and things like that on the agenda, so.
Can I just add, too, that we are now making sure that the curriculum is the same from six through twelve? So we're using the same textbook company so that all the kids, when they are in middle school, when they go to high school, they will be familiar with the online platform, so it can be like a seamless transition.
President Holder?
Trustee Chambliss?
So Ms. Perry, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, I really should have emailed you this, but could you tell us all the curriculum you've brought to Madison in the past two years?
Yeah, so in the past two years, we now have secured six through twelve ELA curriculum using McGraw-Hill Study Sync. We have also secured now, if this passes, six through twelve math curriculum using McGraw-Hill. And something that we never really had was securing health curriculum. I know that is not a core subject, but I think our kids need to be updated and educated on the same level, whether it's math, English, science, social studies, or health, as other school districts. And this year, we are in the process of creating, last year through the task force, pacing guides. So we now have pacing guides that we're focusing on for quarter one, and that's going to be our focus as a task force. I'm excited.
That's beautiful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. Director's contract, we did. Yes? Okay.
Hold on.
No, yeah.
Oh, bananas.
Anything else? Anybody else? All righty, roll call vote, please.
Crystal Beaver?
Yes.
Mary Bush?
Yes.
Rebecca Chambliss?
Yes.
Mary Harp?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Mark Kimball?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All righty. That being said, there's only one thing left on the agenda. Adjournment. I need a maker and support, please.
President Holder?
Trustee?
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
I'll second.
Trustee Harp?
Two years running.
All righty. Roll call vote, please.
Crystal Beaver?
Yes.
Mary Bush?
Yes.
Rebecca Chambliss?
Yes.
Mary Harp?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Mark Kimball?
No.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passed.